Tuesday, October 29. It's 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, Statewide Jail and Juvenile Detention Facility Modernization Task Force. So we appreciate that you was there. Commissioner Carolina Mejia to my right, Commissioner Gary Edwards to my left, and Commissioner Emily Claus to my left. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Josh Cummings. Okay, so calling the meeting to order, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Edwards.
Yes, and I'm gonna in turn turn to Mr. Halverson. He's a retired veteran of the United States Army. Ask him to leave.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Mejia, would you proceed with a land acknowledgement?
Sure, yes. We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a proposed agenda, and I believe there is a going to be a motion to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move Consent Item A regarding the Sheriff's Office contract with the City of Tonina to Department Items.
Okay, a motion's been made. Oh, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in a second to amend the motion, or sorry, amend the agenda to remove Item 3A and make it 4A as a Department Item. Commissioner Claus would have that right to remove that, but in terms of resetting then the agenda, motion in second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed. Okay, so we have an amended agenda, and can I get an approval motion for that amended agenda?
I would move to approve the amended agenda.
Motion in second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, the clerk has one quick.
Yeah.
We will also need a motion to add the Deschutes ILA item.
Okay, that was, that's another piece. Okay.
I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah, let's withdraw the motion, thank you. So we have an amendment that's been approved to move 3A to 4A under Department. Now, we'll need a motion, let me just get to that piece. Okay, I'm comparing the original agenda to where we stand now.
I would move to add an item to the agenda for the interlocal agreement with Department of Enterprise Services for the Deschutes Estuary Project.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion in a second to add an agenda item under Department Items, that would go under 5A, and to add the interlocal agreement. Any discussion on that motion?
I'll have discussion if the motion will be sorted.
Okay, very good. No other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries three to one to add 5A to the agenda. So now we have two amendments to the agenda that have been approved. We need approval of the rest of the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
Chair, now I would move to approve the amended agenda for October 29, 2024.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the amended agenda with the two changes. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So we have an approved agenda, and the clerk has been kind enough to anticipate those possible changes, and we have a working copy that we can make reference to. So next up is opportunity for the public to address the board. And the Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. There are guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate. General speaking guidelines including introducing yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside when you're called. Please address the board, not audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones. The board does not respond directly to public comment. The county manager may follow up with specific items on an as-needed basis. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes. May not donate any of that speaking time to other speakers. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. Remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal are not permitted. And finally, all written material provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 RCW. And no electioneering comments. So with those guidelines, I will call out the folks in the room. John Pettit's first, Barry Halverson's on deck, and then we'll get to anyone who has joined us via Zoom. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's John Pettit. I live in East Olympia. So I've been watching and taking note of several different things, and you know, sometimes the appearances that the commissioners don't actually identify that there is some financial issues related with the county and the current conditions. One of the particular issues I'm just gonna throw out there quick, and then I'll address something else, is there's still a continuing effort by the county to reduce its revenue sources by supporting a program that would cause the state DNR not to cut timber as it's supposed to and share revenue as provided under the current state laws. I, I don't know, those millions of dollars to the road department and to the general fund probably don't mean an awful lot to the county, because we must not be in that bad a shape. Then the second one is, is that now all of a sudden we're looking at trying to come up with more money. We don't know where the money's coming from for sure yet, but we're trying to find a way to spend it, or obligate to spend it, for an ILA which you're considering pushing forward today. I watched the meeting earlier, and this is a little bit of an issue, because one of the things which I realize that sometimes young, young attorneys, they've kind of given an instruction, "Find us a way that we can do this." Well, Travis, I believe is the, is the lead on the attorney level, but I'm gonna bring you back in time, to a time of July 19, 2022. You as commissioners, all three of you, plus Ms. Claus wasn't part of the program at the time, you actually signed Ordinance Number 16080, the use of stormwater funds as such, limited to unincorporated Thurston County. How is it that you're thinking about spending stormwater funds on what would be classified as waters of the state that are located inside the city of Olympia? That is, that is a violation of following county code. Now, just, I'm not gonna get into deeper in that. I've told you, I sent you the information I think you need to look at. The appropriate thing is, never make obligations till you actually figure out where the money's coming from. That's the most ludicrous. I'm gonna go to the restaurant, I don't have any money in my wallet, but I think I might wanna just eat something. No, you figure it out, your money part first. The extra part which I wanted to cover is a topic which is part of my Color of Money topic, which I always have for you guys. I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's a difference between taxes and fees. Taxes are for, as defined from a court decision. A tax is defined as levy made for purposes of raising revenue for a general government purpose. A fee is enacted principally as an integral part of the regulation of an activity and to cover the cost of regulation. There is nothing about being located in Olympia that is part of a regulatory activity of the stormwater fund, which I suspect, we don't even know if it's gonna pass a legislature. It's only $350 million. So I'm gonna suggest you just put this aside till you get all your opinions in. Thank you very much.
Barry Halverson with Terry Ballard on deck.
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Barry Halverson. I'm from Yale, Washington. After the research provided you on the use of stormwater fees to pay for the Deschutes Estuary interlocal agreement, I doubt your county auditorium or prosecuting attorney's office could have a thumbs up on using stormwater funds. If they did, I would be shocked. I was shocked to hear what was going on this morning. We're trying to find a way to make it work. That's not acceptable. It just basically isn't. And you're not gonna find a way that's gonna be acceptable, and you can bet that it will be challenged. What are your options? There is only one left, general funds. But you do not have any. General fund dollars are seriously underwater by millions, and you are attempting to find ways to shore up those funds for 2025 and beyond. The county's general fund financial situation gets worse every year for the near future, beyond when you will need to start funding this ILA. You are considering budget containment options that include reduction in staff by 50-plus employees to save roughly $6 million and/or elimination of vacant positions, freezing all hiring of new general fund positions, researching nonessential activities. Here's an idea. This ILA is a nonessential activity. You have no legal obligation to this ILA, and you cannot afford it. Considering revenue options, you have already planned to shift $4.7 million from the county road fund into the general fund, more than ever before, and more than any other county in the state, and that does not get close to the additional $9 to $12 million you need. You are considering increasing the amount you shift from the county road fund, which you may need to do to balance your budget. Moving funds from the county road fund has serious implications, including deferred maintenance on roads that need repaired, costs to cover deferred maintenance are increasing every year, and thereby increasing the cost for repair as more repairs are needed but set aside or deferred. This is a never-ending cycle of failure of our most basic infrastructure. To fund specific road infrastructure projects that could be funded by the county road fund, you were shifting to the general fund. You are considering funding a transportation benefit district. By what? Increasing vehicle license fees by $50, which you could pass without voter consent, but I wouldn't suggest it. Increasing vehicle license fees by $100, which would require voter approval, which, if you're gonna do it, that's the only way I would recommend you do it, and increase sales taxes to fund a transportation benefit district. Just listen to what I've just said. And this morning I heard one of the things, if you get this passed today for this ILA, and it actually gets through the state, and you have to fund this ILA, you're talking about having to increase what? Stormwater fees. We're gonna be watching that very closely. I know you don't have to get voter approval to increase fees, but guess what? Everybody's gonna know about it. You have already been named in one lawsuit because of this ILA, and attempting to remediate that cost by entering into agreement with other ILA partners to fight the lawsuit together. Regardless, it is costing the county money, and the state has already told you they will not indemnify you or other partners to this ILA against these lawsuits. As an example of how ILAs can go wrong for ILA partners, all you need to do is look back to just last week and your conversation regarding the Joint Animal Services Commission ILA. You signed this ILA as joint partners committing you to pay 50% of what, of cost with what? Less than 20% of the benefit of that particular activity. And now you are powerless to curb the spending, which is going up. Now they want to build a new facility, and you are on the hook for 50% of that cost. I assure you, that will happen with the Deschutes Estuary ILA. You only must look at the estimated cost of 2022 for this project, for your fit share at $2.8 million. Now, two years later, it's $7.5 million. My time's up, but I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening, and I hope you all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Ballard with Arthur West on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I'm a 35-year veteran, and I reside in unincorporated Thurston County, better known as Tanglewell. I never knew that the stormwater was your utility. It's not. It's under the Department of Ecology, permitted out to the incorporated and the unincorporated county for them to handle on a five-year permit. Okay? I don't know why 11 people, as brought up by John Pettit, are being paid out of the stormwater fund who work in CPED, but that's your own handling. That's just a quick note. Senate Bill 5358, and you'll be getting all this stuff, okay, says that the Washington Department of Veterans Affairs is required to provide grants for basically service officers. So why are we paying for service officers out of the Veterans Emergency Fund, better known as Veterans Assistance Fund? You'll be getting that bill. It passed in 2023 at end of session. Also, when are you guys gonna comply to your own codes? This code, 2.122.030, says that a majority must be from the nationally-recognized veterans group, and must be evidenced by a written notice from the nationally-recognized veterans organization. Being a member doesn't call, call for a representative, and your own code even doesn't, and you fail to provide this code. You failed to provide, but we're living in a democracy ruled by government. We're not pledged under the Constitution to be a constitutional republic, as we did in the Pledge of Allegiance. This, I am outraged by this veteran resource fair, outraged. Okay? I bet this will be my fifth that I belong to. It's between the hours of nine, nine and 3 o'clock tomorrow, tomorrow, on a Wednesday. Who shows up for this meeting? What veterans are gonna show up for that? Okay? They're still working, and this is provided to all veterans. This is, this will be my fifth that I belong to, the fifth county that I went into. We got Attention Veterans, all these services, we got all these, we got like, for instance, there's 21 servicers or 30 services that they say, that they'll provide. I hope they're all there. I went to one in Yakima, and they provided, they provided services, they provided people there, supporting the gov, supporting the veterans, 77 different organizations. And by the way, we are fifth in disabled veterans. We are fifth in the state of Washington for disabled veterans. Yakima is way down there. Okay? I hope you're providing the same thing for Yakima. Now, back to this. This is not a county seat. You need 2/3 of vote for county seat. AGO 1987 by Christina Gregwire, okay, who is our governor. Well, I guess, we don't have to follow AGOs. And we were sued back in, we were sued back in 2004 by the City of Olympia in Tomwater for trying to move the courthouse outside the county seat. Okay? And guess who it was there? Elizabeth Petridge was the respondent. Wow. Okay, next. Office space, B O C C. RCW 3616090 says courthouse. County sheriff says county seat. Okay? County treasurer says county seat. Okay? Office is at the county seat. County road engineer at the county seat. We are not in the county seat. Okay? And, and just an end. I'm outraged to see that we have 51 pedophiles that are not complying with, with court orders. They're noncompliant. 53. Wow. Do you feel safe with that? Okay? They're just running around. 87% of the homeless have a drug addiction, next 4% have mental illness. Wow. I'm pretty much through. I know it won't help. I know it won't matter, because I've been here many times to do this, following the law, but we don't follow law. And I'm done. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Arthur West. I live on Berry Street Northeast, and I also have property in unincorporated Thurston County, Bobby Everidge State College. First, as a point of order, I'm questioning whether or not it's appropriate to make a last-minute change to the agenda, agendas, and public meetings are governed by the Open Public Meetings Act. I have not read that portion lately, but I'm relatively certain it's not proper to make a last-minute change to the agenda at the meeting. I think that needs to be 24 hours prior to the meeting, and posted and made available. So to the extent that you're going to be voting on matters put in at the last minute, I would ask that you postpone those to prevent a possible violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. Second off, as to the subject matter of one of those, the ILA that they, that they are asking you to sign, I have today's handout, which shows that previously in 2022, Thurston County signed onto a memorandum of understanding, which on page four states that the Fifth Avenue Dam will not be removed until this work is complete, talking about the remediation of the toxic waste. Well, the ILA, the ILA or ICA that you're asked to sign today says exactly the opposite. It says that it is anticipated the port will implement a project to remediate sediment contamination prior to this project, but that if it doesn't, the cost will go way up. This memorandum of understanding was appended as Attachment 23, the official final environmental impact statement for this project. So by altering that, you're acting in contrary to the environmental, the formal environmental impact statement, which could be very well seen to be a violation of SEPA. And these documents are appended, and there's a, there's a citation to the, the MOU. Second, after those, there is an attachment from CLIPA dating back to 2018, which was a organization for, for the Capital Lake Improvement and Protective Association. One of the former members was Justice Utter, very well-respected Supreme Court Justice. They, I hope you could review that. They say some, have some very serious concerns about Floyd Snyder, the consultant that is running this project. And so I'd ask you to review that prior to signing this. Finally, I have a 17-year-old Deschutes Estuary feasibility study, Phase 3, prepared by Moffett and Nichols, another more competent environmental consultant, for the Department of Fisheries. On page two of that, under Permits and Agreements Required, the first thing they mention, NEPA. Federal funds may be needed for a project of this magnitude, which would trigger specific NEPA requirements. Well, federal funds haven't spent, $6.4 million has been appropriated from NOAA. The last attachment is the first page of a suit in the Federal District Court for the District of Columbia, that's being filed on Wednesday, challenging the NEPA, the lack of a NEPA study on this project. And you're just, you not mentioned its defendants in this, it's just NOAA and the rest of them, but the NEPA study will, if done, will do the comprehensive study of the remediation of waste at the port by the Corps of Engineers along with this project. And the fact that they haven't done one yet is the problem with this project, because the federal issues, federal waterways, endangered species, toxic contamination, none of that has been considered up to this point, and that's the problem with this project. So I'd ask you, you don't sign the ILA. Thank you very much for your
Anyone else in the boardroom who did not sign up but would like to provide comment? Looking at you, Mr. Trowbridge, come on up.
Brett Trowbridge, South Patterson Lake. So you remember the map that I was passing around that showed the properties that were left out? And if you remember, by my count, there were 13, including the railroad track, one on the north end and 11 on the south end, for a total of 13. Well, here's another map that I got from Mr. Whitford. It's color-coded, so I don't know if handing it out black and white helps you much, but it shows which properties were actually left, left out from North Lake. And instead of it being one, it looks like there's six. So that makes a total of 18. There's roughly 180 lakefront properties on Patterson Lake, so that's about a tenth of the properties now that have been left out. In terms of waterfront, way more than a tenth. The railroad track has huge waterfront. In terms of acreage, way more than a tenth. So I'd like to just pass this around so you can look at it. I'm talking about the six properties on the extreme north end of the lake up here that apparently were not included. I can't get this map from Mr. Whitford. So I'm asking you, did you know this? And if so, why was this done? Why were six properties on the north end left out?
We don't answer those questions at this time, Mr. Trowbridge.
Well, that's typically what you always say, I guess.
Yeah. We'll take a look.
That's it. That's my comment then. I'd like my map back.
Can I take a picture of it?
Is there any chance that Amy could make a copy of it and give him back his original?
Is that okay if we make a copy? Okay, thank you. Good idea. Okay. Anyone else in the boardroom who wanted to give public comment, did not have a chance to sign up?
Somebody is in the back.
I see somebody signing up right now.
It's for the public hearing.
And I'll go to the folks on Zoom, and I can't read all the names. There's a nice farm fence.
Kevin Dayton.
A two?
Kevin Dayton.
Which is one of our staff. No, Kevin Dayton, did you just like to give public comment? Doesn't be on my eyesight. Doesn't be on my eyesight. Okay, go ahead, and I'm going to move along. If you change your mind, raise your hand. I see Kent Markley. Would you like to give public comment?
I would.
You've got four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kent Markley, I'm in West Olympia. I'm just popping in to do a quick over Zoom public comment regarding something that I'm increasingly concerned about as time has gone on, and that is the ongoing suspension of Commissioner Klaus from all of her board and committee positions. As I'm sure you're all well aware, Commissioner Klaus was suspended from all of her boards and committee memberships representing the county back in August in response to an investigation that was about to be conducted, and she continues to not be on any of those positions, despite the fact that we are only a couple of days old from Halloween at this point. So it's been a little while. This is despite the fact that preliminary sort of findings for the investigation, at least what I've been able to find online, is that allegations were unsubstantiated. Obviously, the actual investigation itself, to my knowledge, has not been released, and so that's really all I have to go off of, which means that, to my knowledge, Klaus has been suspended from all of her boards and committee positions for a nothing burger for, at this point, a few months. This concerns me for a couple of reasons. Reason number one is, given that, at this point, it sounds like we have preliminary findings of that investigation, and the investigation has found no wrongdoing, it stands to reason that you should reinstate Commissioner Klaus to all of those positions. I mean, we're talking about some seats that are relatively important. She was suspended from the Disability Board, from the Law and Justice Council, from the Regional Housing Council. Commissioner Klaus was elected in just like everybody else on the Board of Commissioners, and so it stands to reason she should have those seats back, given that, at this point, there's no reason to my knowledge to think she's done anything wrong. The second reason it really concerns me is, I don't know if it was entirely proper for her to be removed from any of these seats for the investigation in the first place. Obviously, it makes perfect sense for the Board of Commissioners to want to have all propriety when it comes to something like this. I totally respect that and understand that. But unless her service on a particular board or commission is somehow directly connected to the investigation being done, I'm not sure what the point is. For example, her suspension from the Disability Board, how is her voting on that really going to impact the investigation one way or another? So I'm not entirely convinced that that was actually an appropriate move by the Board of Commissioners in the first place, even back in August. For those two reasons, I encourage the Board of Commissioners to reinstate Emily Klaus to all of her seats. At this point, it seems like the whole thing kind of boiled up into nothing. At this point, it's been in the media, the local media, of course, consistently for some time. And so, just in the name of respectability and showing everything to be above board, it stands to reason she should be put back into her proper place. She was voted in by the voters, just like everybody else, and we should treat her as such. Anyway, thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Markley. Alex Thompson is next.
Has not been able to connect to audio, so probably will not be able to respond.
Okay. I'll, I'll keep my eye on that. All the other names are staff. Mr. Penn. Okay. Now, coming forward, so that will end public comment. Thanks, everybody, for being here to give us your input. That brings us to county manager update.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Just provide an update to the board that our county HR department, along with the Commissioner's office, continues to work to update our human resource policies, and we look forward to bringing something for your review in the next little while.
Questions for county manager? Let's look at the consent items then. We have a, an amended consent agenda that takes us from items three A, I'm going to look at the clerk while I say this, to three U. Okay? Is there a motion, any, any request to remove an item beyond what we've already taken care of? Yes?
Just for clarification, Chair. The issue of the ILA with the state.
Five A now, it's under department.
It's under a department. Okay. Thank you very much. Just clarifying.
Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I would move to approve consent items three A through three U.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent items three A through three U. It's a non-debatable motion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, motion carries. Those items are approved. That brings us to item four A on the amended agenda, which is a sheriff's office item, the reimbursement contract with the city of Tonino. I believe under Sheriff, well, Sheriff Sanders is here. Is under Sheriff handling this? You are. Okay, come on up, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. I think there was a request to kind of maybe, because there's been community questions about law enforcement in Tonino, and just kind of explanation of how this fits might help answer some of those questions. We appreciate your taking the time.
Yeah. So this is, um, the, the context of this is that, um, in previous history, and I don't want to speak for the city of Tonino, but my understanding is that there were some problems with retention. So Tonino opted to slash one of their FTEs and give all of their officers pay increases to help with that retention and, and keeping good staff onboard. As a result of that, um, they were not able to continue twenty-four-hour operations in the city of Tonino. And obviously, um, you know, not dissimilar to any other kind of first responder service. You can't just not have police response first. You can't be, um, you know, a free-for-all for six hours. So, uh, Tonino reached out to us last year, and we negotiated up a very Tonino-friendly contract that basically said, hey, the county will cover policing services from midnight to six in the morning. That's the timeframe for when their last officer signs off to, I believe, when their chief signs on in the morning. So, um, that's the contract that has been occurred, that has been, um, in place for the last year, and this is just an extension of that contract. In a separate conversation, then, the new mayor approached me about what it would look like to contract all of the services. I provided that update for the Tonino City Council, and that's all my involvement in that. I have not been involved in any further conversations. So this is just to extend the current contract, which says, we're not going to let the citizens of Tonino not have police services from midnight to six AM nightly.
Questions from the board on the Tonino contract?
No.
Commissioner Klaus?
Just a comment. I wanted to say thank you for taking the time to come in. I was the one who asked to move this off consent because I had some constituent questions about policing in Tonino. So this is really helpful to kind of have the background. So, yeah, thanks for your time.
Absolutely.
He's from here.
Sheriff, I was just going to say that Tonino's not the only jurisdiction you have these contracts with, that I'm aware. You have other jurisdictions that you have similar contracts with.
Correct, yeah. The, the scale of economy for a small city or town to run their own police department is extremely costly. When you talk about certifying all your police officers, sending them all to the academy, covering twenty-four, four-seven, twenty-four hours a day, I should say, sorry, infrastructure, maintaining a fleet, maintaining a training cadre, all those types of things are really expensive. And that's why cities like Rainier and towns like Pucota contract with larger entities. So we do have contracts with both Pucota and the city of Rainier to provide all of their policing services. And then, obviously, that's not to be confused with, um, I'm having a, a mind blank here, but basically mutual aid. Sorry. So that's not to be confused with mutual aid, which is just when police officers across the county are helping each other on calls.
Anything else for Sheriff Sanders? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
Your motion?
I would move to approve the reimbursement contract with the city of Tonino.
Second?
Motion and second? Discussion on the motion? Nope. Hearing now. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pause? Motion carries. Five A. This is the interlocal agreement with Department of Enterprise Services for the Deschutes Estuary Project. I'm going to look to the county manager. We, we've obviously had, there's a slide teed up. Does somebody, does that mean there's?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay, perfect. Then I'll hand it to the county manager.
Thank you so much, Chair. The Department of Enterprise Services is undertaking a monumental estuary restoration project in the heart of Washington State Capitol. The Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project will restore two-hundred-and-sixty acres of salt marshed habitat in South Puget Sound. The estuary is at the mouth of the Deschutes River, on the footsteps of Washington State Capitol campus along with the shoreline of downtown Olympia, within the usual and custom fishing grounds of the Squawson Island Tribe. The interlocal agreement is proposed to address shared responsibilities for long-term sediment management in the restored estuary. The parties of the ILA, ILA, excuse me, include Department of Enterprise Services on behalf of Washington State, the Squawson Island Tribe, Lot Clean Water Alliance, the Port of Olympia, the City of Olympia, and the City of Tom Water. ILA outlines the financial commitment with payments beginning in two thousand and twenty-seven. Payments will be escalated at a four-point-five percent each year. Dredging will be done once the criteria for the dredge event is met and only when it is determined that it is necessary to prevent significant adverse impacts to the surrounding marinas. And for the public's information, about three weeks ago, the Department of Enterprise Services, along with their consultants, came and did a work session with the board and went through a pretty thorough presentation on all the details of the project and its stages.
Okay. And that's available for folks to look at. Questions for county manager, just regarding the items?
Yeah, yes, I have, I have one question.
Go ahead, sir.
You mentioned that there's going to be an escalator of four-point-five percent of the ongoing costs each year that we're, we're going to be responsible for, whatever the agreement was initially in a memorandum of understanding. I think that was not in there. I'm just wondering, is that what we're going to be faced with, with is a four-point-five percent?
Yes, that's correct. In the ILA, there is a contribution that the county will be making, and it goes up annually four-point-five percent.
I, I don't remember that being in the memorandum of understanding as we were talking about the concept of bringing this together. Would you know if that was in there or not?
That preceded my time, but I don't believe that at that time, the escalator was mentioned. I think, uh, county staff was informed of the escalation component about two months ago, um, from the state staff.
And I guess I'll have other comment if there's a motion that moves forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on this item?
Yeah. I would move to approve the interlocal agreement with the Department of Enterprise Services for the Deschutes Estuary Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve interlocal agreement with Deschutes Enterprise Services. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess so I don't drag this out and be too repetitive as I've commented on this quite a few times over the last month or so. There is some new information here. I was not aware of Resolution one-six-zero-eight-zero of county code that refers to stormwater usage. I was not aware that the four-point-five percent increase per year was a new item since the memorandum of understanding that was signed by this board to look into the concept and see if everything was feasible. The other piece of that is, I don't see any need for a rush on this particular issue. And we've had issues raised today by Mr. Pettit, by Mr. Halverson, and Mr. West that concern me. And although we don't interact and have dialogue with people when they're making public comment, that public comment nonetheless comes forward and becomes part of the public record. And Mr. Halverson's written comments, I believe, were a continuation of his oral presentation that will become a, a part of the public comment today. And because of those concerns, I do not feel it is a good idea to move forward with this, and hence, I will be voting in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mihail?
Thank you. So I'm supporting this interlocal agreement for many reasons, but I do believe it benefits the full region. First of all, as members of the Board of Health, the environmental health of the whole county is our responsibility. With this ILA, we would achieve our goals of environmental restoration, water quality improvements, and enhanced biodiversity. I also want to mention the importance of the cultural and tribal significance of this region. A restored estuary with public access will draw ecotourism, recreational fisheries, bird watchers, and outdoor enthusiasts to the area, boosting the economy of Thurston County. Businesses across the county, from restaurants and hotels to shops, would benefit from this increased tourism, especially those further from Olympia that could provide services to a new influx of visitors. By participating, Thurston County can help ensure a sustainable approach to land and water management, which aligns with the bright, broader climate resilience goals that we have. Most importantly, a formal interlocal agreement provides an opportunity for Thurston County to advocate for regional collaboration and equitable distribution of resources. This project offers the county a say in government structures, ensuring long-term sustainability and proper management of the estuary. By supporting the estuary restoration, Thurston County reinforces its commitments to sustainable practices and serves as a role model for other regional initiatives. This collaboration with Olympia, Tom Water, and the Squawson Tribe, as well as the state, fosters a spirit of unity and a shared purpose, creating a foundation for tackling future issues that may arise within the county.
I have some points. I will, if you could see behind the dais right now, you would see that I have papers strewn from here to here, all about the estuary project. There's so much information that goes into this. It's a decades-long effort on behalf of many regional partners. The estuary, for me, you know, it's significant for a lot of reasons. For me, the number one reason of significance is that the restoration of the estuary is of profound cultural significance to the Squawson Tribe. The project will help our tribal communities and is an important step to repairing historical harm and recognizing the importance of indigenous stewardship over these lands. To me, that's a big, you know, that's a big reason why I do support the project. I want to also make it clear, I support the estuary project, you know, based on the, the benefit it provides to our community. The, sorry, I, like I said, I have so much in front of me. It's, it's really hard to articulate, like, the importance and significance of this project, but I've heard the concerns from the constituents regarding the legalities of the funding mechanisms and the financial health of the county right now. And I hear those concerns, and they're valid, which is part of what makes this decision so tough. I just don't feel like in good conscience I could hold something back that's been going on for such a long time based on, you know, a funding mechanism that it's our responsibility to figure out how this project will be funded. I do have some concerns that I share with those constituents who have raised them, but I see risks on both side, both sides of this equation, and the risks of letting this fall through the cracks at such a critical time, delaying the decision so far, you know, is going to cause us to not be able to leverage the many sources of funding at every level. We have other jurisdictions locally contributing to this. We have state money, federal money, and we need to show that this is a regional effort. And the county does support this effort. The funding mechanism is, like I said, a concern. One piece of mine, you know, that I've kind of gained through the process of learning about this is the fact that if the money from the state doesn't come through the county, you know, we are, we rely on that money from the state to be secured before we pay into this. So for me, that was a layer of protection, as well as the fact that expenditures wouldn't start until, I believe, twenty-twenty-seven or even a few years after. So we do have time to figure out the funding mechanism piece, which is why I'm supporting this motion today. I do invite community members who have concerns to con- I do invite community members who have concerns to continue to approach me. I read your emails. I read all your public comments that you submit, especially, you know, as it relates to this issue. So I do invite further conversation. And for me, what really secured it was the fact, aside from everything else I've mentioned, the fact that there is a mechanism for pulling out of the ILA if something were to happen that causes the county to feel like it's in the best interest of the community to pull out. Granted, that would be, that would be a process that we would want to avoid, but there is that protection in place. So for those who are concerned, please do continue to approach me. I welcome your thoughts, but I wanted to share why I support this motion today.
You can rebut us out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's fine.
Okay. I haven't said a lot during this process because, for a couple of reasons, I have been, for the majority of my six years on the board, the county's representative on the executive committee, working through the process. And, but I want to underscore that point. When I got on the board, this process was already underway. I heard a ton about it, the problem, all during the time I moved to this region in 2007, and it was in the front page of the Olympian since that day, I mean, and probably well before. Commissioner Hutchings was our representative at that time, but then I believe the following year, my second year, I took over that role, and I've been in it until this, until this year. So just a tremendous amount of effort has gone into creating a process, and it is a strategically designed process to leverage a very modest commitment from local jurisdictions to try to leverage that into hundreds of millions of dollars from the state and potentially other sources to solve a problem that has plagued this community for a generation now, more than a generation. So I'm supportive of the effort to work, you know, we try to work regionally on problems when they are of a regional significance, and I'll talk about why I think this is in a moment. But to be engaged in that process was the right thing to do. This problem was stale and needed a kickstart well before I got on this board, and the community had been wrestling with it. And it had come, it finally gotten everyone to the table and got an investment into an EIS process to evaluate all the different alternatives, boil them down to three, and then really suss out the, you know, what are the, what are the pros and cons or costs and benefits of each different approach that we might take? And the estuary, beyond being the most environmentally friendly one, which was going to be really important to me, was also by far the cheapest. So it was, it was an absolute no-brainer for the community to, to jump at this opportunity to do a lot of the things Commissioner Mihail and Commissioner Klaus have alluded to with respect to, you know, righting past wrongs and trying to solve a problem and make, the ecotourism element, and Commissioner Mihail points to, is huge. So I think this is a very carefully designed effort to bring money into this community to solve a problem at a fair, at a fairly modest price tag, because as Commissioner Klaus said, the risk here, if we don't do this, so I sit on the Board of Lot Clean Water Alliance. Lot is the key to our ability to economically develop in this county without, even if, you know, without the ability to take more wastewater treatment and, and, and have the infrastructure, utility infrastructure for more development, this whole county suffers. And if we don't clean up Bud Inlet and get the water quality issues sorted out there, there will be no economic development in this county because Department of Ecology will not, will pull Lot's permit, and we will not be able to permit any new connections. So this is a critical element of benefit to the county, based on economic development considerations, both having a healthy waterfront right in the core of our county, as well as being able to promote development through our infrastructure at Lot. The Board of Health is a, you know, one of the things I heard in some of the comment was that, you know, we're commissioners, we're responsible to the unincorporated county. Well, it's interesting because that's not entirely true. You know, we have a dual, you know, as I, there's a, there's a reference book that one of the Evergreen professors, Steve Landin, has written about, about county government in Washington, and it's really interesting. It talks about the different natures of duality. County government is an absolutely unique species of government within Washington's structure. It's not like cities, and it's not like the state. And we have a set of, one of those dualities is we have a set of responsibilities that apply only to the unincorporated county, and we have a set of responsibilities that apply to the entire county. That's why we're voted on by the entire county. So, you know, we do have responsibilities to our constituents across all the county when it comes to the Board of Health, for example, and water quality issues. When it comes to Lot, forget about the economic development for a minute, 10% of Lot's ratepayers live in the county. All the urban growth area, I am one of those Lot ratepayers that lives in the county, not in a city. So it's of utmost concern to them. Importance to the tribe, important to our overall environmental benefit, the money that this county pours into efforts for salmon recovery. I represent South Sound Watersheds on the Puget Sound Partnership Salmon Recovery Council, where we spend untold amounts of money, time, planning, staffing, to try to enhance our natural environment, restore estuaries. Estuary environments are the number one most important thing for salmon, where they're able to get from their freshwater to saltwater environments. And finally, Commissioner Mihail alluded to this, but this county, unlike any other place I've seen, works on problems regionally. We want to be at that table for all those regional conversations. We do not want to get into a game of, well, this is, you know, we don't really have responsibility for this, and we don't really have responsibility for this, and we don't want to contribute to this, and we don't want to contribute to that, because we will find, if we play that game, we will find ourselves left out of very important conversations and processes that do serve the benefit of all of Thurston County. All Thurston County residents benefit when we work together regionally to solve problems. The overall contribution of Thurston County to this, if we're successful, is less than 1% of the project. If we can solve that, this problem for less than 1% at county government, and as Commissioner Klaus mentions, none of this is triggered unless we get that, those other funding sources and we're able to, to actually, you know, follow through on this project. We will have done the community a great service, in my opinion. So for all of those reasons, I'm supporting this ILA. Commissioner Edwards, I know you have something to say.
I guess I would just follow up on my earlier comments with the fact that I, too, am not against this project. If the project is beneficial and the community wants to move forward with this project, that's fine. My problem is that we do, we really do not have the whole financial aspect of this figured out to where it's correct. We had a finding earlier this year from the state auditor. That doesn't do our credit rating or other issues of financial stability any good to have findings. If we don't get a word, get word back from the state auditor today, which the county auditor has said that she would prefer that we get a ruling back from the state auditor that everything is A-OK, I think we should make sure we get it right before we move forward with something. There is not a timeframe on this issue about everybody's going to drop out tomorrow if we don't vote on this. This has been going on for years, and I think it can continue to go on, but we should get it right. So already today, we committed financially to litigation that this operation has already been involved in this ILA. So I just don't think we've got any reason to rush. I'm not saying drag our feet. I'm just saying, let's get it right before we move forward. I just think it's a mistake. The resolution today brought forward by Mr. Pettit, I don't know if it's right or wrong. He's got no reason to come in here and lie to us. I, I'm going to guess we probably have a resolution on file, and maybe that needs to be addressed. I don't know the answer to that. But there's enough other things being brought forward that I really think we should be cautious anytime we're spending the taxpayers' money. So my position remains the same. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
I just have one follow-up to Commissioner Edwards' comments, because I also, I saw the resolution Mr. Pettit sent in, Ordinance Number 16180, regarding illicit discharge detection and elimination. And it was received just earlier today, so I haven't had a chance to go through the whole thing. But in the beginning, I did notice, and I won't read the whole paragraph, but it's section C, so it's pretty early on, that nothing contained in this chapter is intended to be or shall be construed to create or form a basis for liability for the county, the department, its officers, employees, or agents. And it goes on to kind of touch on basically the fact that, like, this, this chapter is not intended to really, like, bear any weight when it comes to litigation. At least, that's my understanding of this paragraph. But like I said, I have to go through the whole thing. I just, that, that part caught my eye, because it was presented as kind of a means to form a basis for liability, and it calls that out in the first section of this ordinance. That's all.
Any other discussion?
I just want to make some clarifications that this is not, we're not spending or signing a check today or next year. The state has to make that commitment first, and that's going to be, that's why there is not necessarily a rush, but a push for all jurisdictions to, to do this, because there has to be this commitment from the local jurisdictions to the state, right, saying, like, all the local jurisdictions are in, and we're all committed, and we're all in this. And it gives us the time to go in and, you know, the auditor has already reached out to the state auditor to check on the information, and it just gives us that time as well to have those conversations on whether stormwater is going to be a feasible method, and if not, then we're going to have to come back to the drawing board and, and figure it out. But at, at this point, just, we're not signing over a check. This does not mean, right, we, we're just committing ourselves to, to being a part of this project.
I will just add, if, if we get a legal opinion that stormwater fees are not eligible, then I will not vote to use them. Commissioner Edwards?
I, I guess just to, we, we would be, even if we didn't put any financial benefit into this agreement, we would be participants just through the mere fact that our county treasurer has agreed to take care of the financial bookkeeping, if you will. That's quite a commitment on its own, and the state is not going to depend on whether or not we're in it or not, because we would be in it with the treasurer's agreement, and that is, that's probably the biggest piece of what we're going to be contributing. The treasurer hasn't been to us to ask for additional help to do this yet, but he might, and that very well could be our commitment. I don't think we bargain very well when we just go ahead and agree to whatever is presented to us. I think there's a, a lot of discussion that we could have had that lays it out pretty clear, that we don't have the resources to do this, but we'll play ball with you in the area where we can. And where we can is probably balancing the checkbook as this work goes through, as long as other entities are putting money in the bank. So I just thought I'd throw that out. Thank you, sir.
I'll just say that we did not agree to everything that was presented, and the reason that there is a specific clause for parties to be able to leave if things, it's specifically because that was our request from Thurston County and trying to put safeguards in, in that, you know, in that project. And so it, it wasn't like we, we just took it. There was a lot of back and forth when it came to this ILA and making sure that, you know, we were, we were a part of the conversation every step of the way and that we had all the securities that we needed to move forward.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, three to one. And we'll move forward. Next up is prosecuting attorney, item 6A, Agreement for Legal Services. Travis Burns is presenting. Travis, I see you. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Great. Commissioners, we are here today seeking authorization for the county manager to retain legal services of law lineman Daniel Kemmerer and Bogdanovich to defend the county in West versus Department of Enterprise Services at Dal. And this concerns defense of the, the item you were just discussing. And the legal services would be shared by co-defendants Lot, the cities of Olympia and Tumwater. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Travis? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the agreement for legal services.
Motion and second to approve agreement for legal services, as outlined by the prosecuting attorney. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing non-call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Have any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries, three to one. Next up, thank you, Travis. Public Health and Social Services contract with Courtside Preservation Associates for Affordable Housing Acquisition. We have Dr. Jen Freihite, our interim Public Health and Social Services Director.
Hi, thank you, yes, Dr. Jen Freihite, interim Public Health and Social Services Director. I am here on behalf of the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention today to ask the Board to approve a contract with Courtside Prevention Associates LLC in the amount of $1,357,699 for the acquisition of the Courtside Apartment. In April 2024, Vital Housing, a limited liability corporation with an office in Seattle, responded to Thurston County's request for proposals for affordable housing capital projects. Their proposal for the acquisition and preservation of affordable housing located at 515 Courtside Street in southwest Olympia and known as the Courtside Apartment Complex. This past summer, the Regional Housing Council recommended funding for Vital Housing Courtside Apartment Project. That recommendation was taken to the Board of County Commissioners on July 16th, where it received final approval. Since the July meeting, staff have completed the necessary underwriting requirements and are ready to execute a contract. The acquisition of the Courtside Apartments will preserve 209 units of affordable housing. The acquisition will extend affordability restrictions on the property through a new 20-year land use restriction agreement, which will be recorded at closing, and the closing on this property is currently scheduled for December 5. And I can answer any questions.
And this potential housing that is going to be acquired will take care of a region problem. Is that correct? It's not just for the city, it's for Thurston County?
I will have to get back to you on that, on that question.
Okay. Well, I'm pretty sure it is. So I'll just let it go at that. The housing authority, I just want to make sure the public knows why we're spending the money and what they're going to get out of it. Thank you.
Yeah, to, just to chime in, I believe Tom answered your question.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards, earlier.
So I, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
Not to put you on the spot, Dr. Freihite, but yes, it has been reviewed by that.
I would assume it's reasonable.
I, I like to have the public know what we're spending the money for.
Yes.
So thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve a contract with Courtside Preservation Associates LLC in the amount of $1,357,699 for acquisition of the Courtside Apartment Complex, preservation of affordable housing, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract in any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Sir, second? Motion and second to approve the contract with Courtside Preservation Associates. Any discussion on this motion?
I have one, well, two now, because I wanted to say thank you to whoever put the motion up on the screen. I still have my estuary documents all over the place, so I, I couldn't find my motion in front of me. But I also want to say thank you to staff. Thanks, Dr. Freihite, for, you know, everything you and your team do. This is really exciting to me, not only as a representative on the Regional Housing Council, but also just as a community member who has worked with people who have resided at Courtside, you know, getting young people into, in my background, working with young people who have been impacted by the justice system. A lot of those folks I work with, you know, they rely on affordable housing complexes such as Courtside. housing complexes such as Courtside, and there are a number of others in our community. And when those complexes start getting purchased by, like, new landlords that are going to up the price and make them market rate, that's detrimental to so many families in our community, and I've seen it firsthand. And I've also seen the fear that people feel when they hear the other complexes are being purchased and, you know, price goes up to market rate, and that fear kind of circulates within the community. And so I just want to say thank you to staff, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I think that preservation projects like this are really important for our community.
And I, I believe, I remember this was a unanimous request from the Regional Housing Council. Is that right, Commissioner? Thank you.
I have been called for the vote, right? Okay, just got lost, got lost in the process there. Okay, so without any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Final business item is Public Works 8A, Contract Award for Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. And we have Joe Plahuda online, one of our engineers, Senior Water Resources Engineer, to brief the Board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Plahuda, Senior Water Resource Engineer with Public Works, here to request that the Board award a contract, construction contract for the Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project to Roglands Incorporated of Aberdeen, Washington, in the amount of $2,132,166. As, as some background on this item, Thurston County owns and operates a water and sewer system serving the Tamashan neighborhood. The water and sewer infrastructure were installed in the early 70s in regulatory compliance. So this project seeks to address, you know, some, some deferred maintenance and capital needs in, in the water and sewer system. The project is funded entirely through the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds. And so on October, October 3rd, we opened bids for this project. Seven bids were received, and in response to those, those bids, we did, the low bidder was Roglands at $2.13 million. We had a bid spread of about a little bit over a million dollars, so bids were from 2.47 million, or 2.13 million, all the way up to 3.25 million. So 2.13 is the, the low bid amount to Roglands, and so again, asking that the Board award this contract to Roglands. With that, I can answer any questions.
I would move to award the contract for the Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project, CP number A053A and A511A to Rog. Rogland? Of Aberdeen, Washington, in the amount of $2,132,166, and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope or up to 10% of the contract. So that would be $213,217, or an aggregate of $2,345,383.
Second.
Motion in second to award this contract award for Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation Project. Any discussion on that motion?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing done, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes us to Commissioner Reports. We do have a 3:30 public hearing, but we have some time for Commissioners to report on Board Work Sessions, assigned committee meetings, any community action, or actions taken, or any upcoming issues. Commissioner Mejia?
Okay, so since the 15th, I attended the Thurston Thrives Breakfast with Commissioner Edwards, as well as Commissioner Mensah. Attended the Thurston County Election Symposium with Emergency Services and the Auditor's Office, and they put this symposium together along with different local partners to discuss what to do in the case of emergency during election season. And just given the fact of what happened in Vancouver, Washington this week, I am very thankful for them putting that symposium up. I think it was, it was definitely timely and gave information to all of our local leaders, both fire, first responders, on what to do and what are the next steps. I also attended intercity transit and attended a signature verification training for the canvassing board, attended a study, three seed, three studies meeting, attended the Bukota Casket Races, Commissioner Mensah and Commissioner Fournier, and we placed in fourth place overall. Out of 15, 14, 15? And I, I got to say, the competition this year was very fierce, and I want to give a shout out to our Public Works Department. They got fifth place, and they did beat us on that second round, but they won the funniest award, so they did such a great job, and it was great to see them there. Attended Thurston County Lead, as well as the Regional Housing Council, and attended the County Road Administration Board, as well as the Thurston Mason BHASO with Commissioner Edwards, and attended Thurston County Heritage Day, and attended the Law Library Meeting, and this afternoon, I attended the Fish Wars Showing, which I thought was pretty timely, which was, is a documentary that kind of highlights the struggles that our local tribes have had to, had in our state, really against our own state with salmon and the different hoops that they've had to jump through. And so I thought the ILA passing was just very timely today.
Commissioner Edwards?
I attended this study meeting down in Rochester area, and I found out, I guess the, the one item that was of interest to me was the Chehalis Tribe up on, on their treatment center at 93rd and I-5, had built to handle 60 inpatients with opioid issues, and they're at 300 already, and they're taking folks from all around. So I just want to put the word out that they're doing a pretty good job, and you know, somebody with a problem, maybe that's a place to go. The Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging Council of Governments Regular Meeting, I attended on the 17th, and then we had a special meeting on the 28th. And we did pass a budget, so like everything else, budgets are going up, we're finding out. I also attended a open house there at AAA. Attended with Commissioner Mejia, Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services, and that was a interesting meeting. I guess not, nothing of consequence really to report. And the EMS Council, and other than that, just a lot of constituent interaction on code compliance, budget issues, building permit issues, and a lot of interaction on the Dischutes Estuary Interlocal Agreement, as you could probably tell from today's meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Klaus?
Thank you. So as far as external committees, since the last meeting, I've attended the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Meeting and the Regional Housing Council Meeting. A couple of things that stuck out from those meetings, actually applicable to both of them, was the Home Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign presented by Rebecca Harvey, and that was really impressive. I'm really excited about that regional initiative kicking off next year. And it also benefits, you know, some of the most vulnerable residents in the community through providing incentives and assistance for some of those upgrades in homes. So that's something to look into. Also, during the Regional Housing Council Meeting, we had a presentation on mold and moisture in rental units, which I found to be really fascinating. I didn't know that within the county, Thurston County is the only jurisdiction that doesn't have a code to prevent or address mold in rental units. So that was something that stuck out to me, and I've, you know, I've followed up with our team here to see if I can get more information on that, or if we could bring that information to the full Board, because I think it's important for us to address. And then for my community interactions, I met with some of our planning commissioners to discuss the CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan, for those who don't know. I also met with Arrest and Jail Alternatives, which is a section of Catholic Community Services that works with people who are justice impacted. And we set up recurring meetings so that I can stay in the loop and kind of act as like a liaison and pass information along to the Board when relevant or necessary. I also attended a ballot processing center tour, which was really fun. I did it last year, but being a presidential election year, this time it was a bit different, and I got to have that experience with my family. My parents and my 11-year-old nephew came, so that was an educational experience for him, and that was really fun. I also attended the County Communications Training, and I want to thank staff, Rob, County Manager, and anyone else who had anything to do with setting that up, because I found it to be extremely beneficial. I took a lot away from that training, so I appreciate that. And then yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending up in Tacoma at the University of Washington, Tacoma Campus, Husky Post Prison Pathways Meeting. It was kind of their kickoff event, and I just thought it was really cool to kind of connect back to that community. They're doing a lot to work with folks who have been incarcerated, coming out of prison, to give them a pathway to higher education. And although it's Pierce County, it's a neighboring county, but a lot of residents from Thurston County attend the University of Washington Tacoma, so I thought that was a good connection to make, and that's all I have.
All right. Okay, yeah, it was very busy a couple of weeks. I attended the Thurston County, or Thurston Thrives elected officials committee breakfast with my seatmates. Attended a community foundation event for their 35th birthday, and kind of previewing what they've got planned for work that they're going to be doing in the community in the coming years. This is in no particular order. Thurston Conservation District did an all-day tour of some of their projects around the county, which was excellent to see. They're just really doing great work, and it was timely, because the Board's going to be discussing and having a public hearing regarding their rates and charges for the next 10 years. So it's great to see what that money does on the ground with landowners and, and different projects. The study meeting was good, down, hosted by the Chehalis Tribe. I had a state building code council meeting. I attended Heritage Day, which is kind of Thurston County's birthday celebration, put on by our Historic Commission. Commissioner Edwards did a great job provide, presenting a Heritage Achievement Award to Gary Alexander, former Chief Justice, and good, great to hear stories about some of the things that have, he's done in the community. This morning was the Tumwater Principals Fund Checkbook Event. There was also a similar event for the North Thurston Education Foundation, had a luncheon last week, was able to attend both of those. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Meeting, the Washington State Association of Counties Virtual Assembly regarding solid waste funding, legislative asks that we're trying to plan for, a legislative forum. This was a really interesting event. Developmental Disabilities Community did a legislative forum at the Olympia Center, where they basically brought people's stories forward, state legislators and candidates for state legislature. And I was invited, we were able to just listen to stories from people in the community about the needs and, and, and they were trying to explain to the legislatures what their legislative ask were going to be and why they were so important, and they were very powerful. It was more of a listening session than really a candidate forum, so that was actually kind of refreshing. Thurston County Chamber Small Business Reception, I attended this time. I attended an open house at the Abigail Stewart Women's Club, which they have periodically. Bukota Casket Races, as Commissioner Mejia described, had a finance committee meeting, attended the Squaxon Island Tribal Flag Raising over the Olympia School District School Offices, just down the street here on Bethel. And that was a pretty powerful ceremony, where the tribal leaders talked about the ongoing development of relationship, relations between the schools and the tribe, and did some, some singing and, and it was a nice reception inside the school district building. We had a communications training with staff that a couple of us attended, and if I missed anything, that about covers it. So with that, it's 3:24, we're at the end of the agenda. If there's nothing for good order, we'll take five minutes, and we'll be back in 3:30 to begin a public hearing on Grand Mount West Landes Proposals. Okay, we're adjourned.